Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. We'll start with a moment of silence and then we'll have the pledge.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, now we're going to open the call to the public. This is an opportunity for members of the public to speak on issues within the jurisdiction of the town council. Comments are limited to three minutes. Please note that individual council members may respond to criticism, may request staff follow-up, or may ask for future agenda consideration. However, we cannot have discussion or take action on items not posted on this agenda. Do we have any public who would like to speak?
Vice Mayor, we received no cards requesting to speak, and we do not have any hands raised online.
Last call. Okay, I'm gonna close the call to the public. We move on now to presentations. Our first presentation this evening will be from First Things First. I'm proud to introduce this important update. Please join me in welcoming Annette Lopez, Community Engagement Coordinator, and I'll ask you if you would introduce the ladies you brought with you.
All right, good evening. So I will introduce, we each have speaking parts, so as their parts come up, I will introduce one, and then the other will introduce the other. But good evening, my name is Annette Lopez, and I am the Engagement Coordinator for First Things First. I cover the Pinell area to include the great town of Florence, so I'm also a longtime resident here of Florence. I grew up here, went to school here, so I'm very excited to have the opportunity to present today and continue to collaborate with the town of Florence. So, thank you Vice Mayor Adam, council members, for having us today. So I'm gonna briefly just talk a little bit about First Things First for anybody, any council members who do not know about our agency. I'll also go into the importance of early childhood, and then I'll introduce Dawn and what she'll be speaking on. So First Things First was created in 2006 by Arizona voters, and we were created to give all children the opportunity to start kindergarten prepared to succeed. Because it's clear that the first five years of a child's life is our best opportunity to set the foundation for lifelong success. So our picture and our vision for Florence is one in which all children are healthy and ready to succeed in school and in life. Our goal is to partner with communities and organizations to better support families and children, and therefore strengthen our community. So the way we support families right from the start makes a big difference in shaping a child's future, which impacts all of us. A primary focus of our work at First Things First is quality, early learning. I always mention, you'll hear me say "quality" quite quite a lot throughout our presentation because that word really does matter when we're talking about education. And what happens in the early years, if you may or may not know, really does matter. So just a little bit about how we work. So First Things First provides the funding, which goes to our grant partners, who then provides the services to children and families. So programs are voluntary, available at no cost to our families, and are provided in a variety of settings. So anyone can go to our First Things First website, find which programs currently hold a grant, and are currently available in your area. Now, when we're speaking about what we're calling today the childcare crisis, which is our main focus today, we at First Things First would like to be considered a thought partner, to be considered and have a seat at the table, and collaborate with the community to bring forth conversations about possible solutions, which we will bring up towards the end in more detail. Now, I'm just gonna bring the importance of early childhood, just to set the foundation. The early years are a critical window of opportunity shaping a child's ability to learn, think, and thrive. Early experiences lay the foundation for their future. And of course, the majority of those early experiences begin at home with parents and family. However, they can also include childcare experiences, and are those of high quality. Well, lack of access to those quality, early learning experiences can derail the development. So children who start behind usually stay behind when they get to school. So we need to invest in our children in the early years, so they are prepared and ready to succeed on their first day of school. When children experience learning in a high-quality, early childhood setting, it helps to ensure a better-prepared student by the time they are in our classrooms. Helping our children now helps our community directly. When that solid foundation is laid in the early years, the first five years, there are so many benefits that will follow that child later in life. It will impact how ready that child is by the time they enter kindergarten, how they score on reading assessments, and how likely they are to graduate and have a career. Well, First Things First is driven by research that proves children exposed to, again, high-quality, early childhood education, they have a better language, math, and social skills, and better relationships with their classmates. In addition, we know that early language abilities are directly related to later reading abilities, because language matters for later reading. It's important to note that gaps in children's vocabulary start to appear as early as 18 months. This is important because by the time they reach 4th grade, about 69% of Arizona students cannot read proficiently. So the best way to reverse this trend is to help children develop language and expose them to, again, high-quality, early settings before they enter into the classrooms. And as this image shows, 3rd grade reading ability is one of the best predictors of high school graduation rates. Again, the key to reversing this trend lies in the early years. In fact, vocabulary, attention, and general knowledge at ages 3 and 4 is strongly correlated to reading comprehension levels at 3rd and 4th grade. So preparing kids is more effective than the near insurmountable and very expensive task of catching them up with remedial services. So I believe we share a vision for Florence. We do want healthy children, we want successful students, and of course, we want our Florence community to thrive. So with that, I leave you that we actually have a childcare crisis. And to further lay the foundation of the current state of childcare in Florence, I will invite Dawn, and she will introduce herself, and she will give you data on the current state of Florence.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us. My name is Dawn Wilkinson with Enhancing Early Childhood. I'm actually a grantee of First Things First. And my contract is to really look at the childcare crisis and the workforce supports that we have in Pinell County for early childhood. So the current state of childcare in Florence, you can see here, the demand, which is the number of children in the Florence area, is 15,340 children. Currently, there are 421 childcare slots in the whole Florence area. That leaves a gap of 1,113 children, so a percentage gap of 72.5% is our gap. There's only a total of eight childcare programs that are licensed or contracted with DES. Now, we know that there are other programs, home-based programs, family, friend, and neighbor programs, but those aren't licensed, and they're not connected with the system by being contracted with DES. So therefore, we have no ideas. We have no connection to them to be able to determine the quality or the health and safety standards that are happening in those home-based programs. And we do have a great family, friend, and neighbor program that supports those programs with some technical assistance and some training, but still will not connect it to them, and they're not receiving all of the resources that we have available through the system. I really wanted to break down the programs that are in the Florence area because it's a little unique here in Florence that there are more childcare slots outside of Florence proper than there are here in Florence. And so you can see here, there's two early childhood programs that are part of the Florence Unified School District that's considered in Florence, building blocks, but we also know that building blocks is gonna be closing this summer. And, you know, not really sure what this district's gonna do as far as that goes, but that program will be closing this summer. So you can see there's 79 slots, but there's no infants and no toddler slots, one-year-old slots. In Florence proper itself, there are 77 childcare slots, no infant slots available, and only 15 one-year-old slots. So at any given time, 15 one-year-olds could be in childcare. And you can see, one of those is the Florence Head Start program. If you're following the federal budget, you know that Head Start has been one of the programs that was identified for elimination. We found out this week that it won't be eliminated. It is a line item in the budget, but we're not sure how much money is gonna be attached to that line item. So we're really looking to see what changes will happen within Head Start for the next fiscal year. So that 52 Florence Head Start is a little up in the air right now as well. That leaves the 25 slots at Wonderland here in Florence proper. And then in Anthem, kind of outside of Florence proper, there are 265 childcare slots, only five infant slots, and 22 one-year-old slots. You can also tell that from the programs on the list, the majority of them are part of school districts or charter schools that follow the school calendars. So there's not full childcare throughout the summer, throughout school breaks, after 3:00 or 4:00 in the afternoon. So it's really thinking about those off-hour needs as well for the families, the 24/7 type of care that needs to happen for a lot of the companies and the businesses that are here and that will be coming in. Along with even just the lack of slots, lack of building space for childcare, we have a childcare workforce issue. The biggest issue is people aren't attracted to this field, and we're not doing things to attract them to this field. We know in education in general, it's not something that people are really attracted to right now. And so you can see that programs are saying that they have staffing shortages, they're having longer wait lists. Some of the classrooms and some of the slots that we saw open may not be open right now because they can't find a staff member to open that classroom. So there may be 15 slots available, but it's really not available because there's no staff to work in those positions. So we're really dealing with a staffing issue as well. And, oh, we can't just raise costs. Families are paying more than they can possibly pay for childcare. And inflation, childcare costs have grown twice as fast as inflation has grown since the 1990s. So right now, the federal government is saying that childcare to be considered affordable should be 7% of a family's income. Here in Pinell County, for one infant, only one infant in childcare, it's $10,000 a year. So for that to be considered affordable, according to the 7%, someone here in Pinell County would need to make $151,000 a year for that to be considered affordable. Currently, it's running, the average for Pinell County is $73,000, so it's about 14% of a family's income is going to childcare. So you can tell, we can't do that to the families. We can't just raise costs for the families because they can't afford it. So it's gonna take all of us, because childcare is something that isn't necessarily seen as part of the education continuum. Most of our childcare programs are for-profit businesses, so that also runs into some issues as well. But we, as a society and as a community, have to come together to find solutions that's gonna be able to help address this issue. As you can tell, the numbers are there. And with the growth that's happening in Florence, it's only gonna get worse. And I'm gonna introduce Katrina for the innovations.
Sorry, just need to... Okay. Hi, everyone. Can you see me? That's what we were laughing about. I was like, ooh, I'm looking at Annette. I'm not sure if you're gonna be able to see me. My name is Katrina Davinian. I'm the Pinell Regional Director for First Things First. And thank you again so much for letting us come and talk to you tonight. So my part in this is to bring to you some innovative solutions. We've been doing this work for a while now. Around Pinell County, the state of Arizona, and even around the country, communities are coming together to find solutions that work based on the capacity and the need of their own communities. So I just wanna share a few of those with you tonight and challenge you to start thinking about who needs to be at the table and how we can... How do I advance this? Okay, I got it. Nope, I don't. There we go. Okay. Give you a cute baby to look at, too. Okay, so municipal space. Can the town make underutilized municipal buildings or rooms available for use by licensed childcare providers, either for free or at a reduced rate? So these are just questions I'm gonna pose to you. This is what some other communities around Pinell County are doing. Financial supports or grants. Will the town establish a childcare stabilization or startup grant fund to help existing providers expand or new ones launch, especially in underserved areas? Which clearly, as Dawn said, Florence is one of those. Permitting and zoning. Can the council review and revise zoning and permitting rules to make it easier for home-based or center-based childcare providers to open or expand? Use of shared spaces. Is there a church or unused classrooms at a school that can be used by a childcare provider? New building development. This is a recent idea that a developer has approached us in Santan Valley. They're bringing, they're proposing a 240-space apartment complex with affordable housing, but including a childcare center in that development. So are there new builders coming into Florence who can incorporate childcare into their planning of their community? And we just wanna remind you that we are here to come alongside the town of Florence as a thought partner, a convener, and a connector to assist you in solving this issue for your families and your young children. Keep hitting the wrong button. There we go. Florence works when childcare works. Quality childcare ensures that parents can work, that children can learn, and that our economy can thrive. Working parents are a critical part of the US labor supply. Finding and affording childcare shouldn't be a barrier. We're finding that people are leaving the workforce because they cannot find affordable childcare. So it's a circular problem. It's going to start affecting everything. But we appreciate your time. Tonight, there's our contact information, and we just open it up to any questions or discussion of any of us.
Thank you so much. Do we have any questions? Councilmember Bencina.
First off, thank you so much. I was just looking at, could I get a copy of this briefing? It's not in our packet, so. And having grandkids, 15 of them, and a lot of little ones, I'm right there with you with my kids. My daughter in Utah pays $1,700 a month for one four-year-old. So that's a problem. Now, I do know we have, churches coming forward to put a school. Is it gonna be, I think it's like 50 or 75 students, I think, coming up for elementary, so maybe that'll help. Yeah, it's a sad state. I love the program. I've got a six-year-old in a public school in Buckhead, Atlanta, that half his day was spent in Spanish class. So at 6 years old, he now speaks Spanish. At 7 years old, he's getting better, and now his dad's learning it. But, so there's great programs out there that we need to be... I'm real worried about where we are on trying to grow some childcare facilities in our town. The other problem is, we don't have a lot of buildings either that could be offered suitable to do these. So it is something we will have to take on and try to bring childcare facilities out here. But again, the price becomes a problem, even if we get them. So I'm interested, and I'd love to see your program and come spend more time with you and learn this. So thanks again for coming.
Councilmember Bedford.
This is like my pet peeve for the childcare, excuse me. I'm gonna fight with you to allow us to have something here at Florence to talk to parents, residents here, to say that they have nowhere else to put their children due to building blocks being closed as of June 30th. The National Guard is also crying out for daycare. I am ready to take a stand in the fight for our, not only our residents, but for our children. If they're not in school, I don't wanna see nobody in the juvenile justice system. I'm tired of it. I spoke with you all earlier, and we need to set up a meeting with the governor. We gotta push this. I'm here to push, to fight, to do whatever I need to do to work with First Things First, and I'm just gonna say enhancing First Things First. We already have somebody that's actually out in the audience who does all the licensing and things like that. She knows the system when it comes to childcare. So can you all set up a me... I'm serious. Can you try and get us a meeting, and I'm willing to go, I'm willing to fight for what's right? Okay? Y'all have my number. Call me. I am ready to fight this battle for our children. I too am a grandmother. I too have, I'm a great-grandmother as well, and I have a great-granddaughter who is autistic. I don't want nobody hurting her. I don't want nobody pushing her aside or anything to appease other people. I am ready to fight with you all. So please, start the battle. Alrighty.
Thank you. Councilmember Buchalato.
Well dang, Sherri. What do I say now? You done said it. Hi, Katrina.
Hi, Nicole.
I know the work that you guys do, and you guys know that you have my support also for whatever you guys need. You guys do good things. I'm on one of the committees with them, and I see what you guys do every day for our kids. I too agree that, you know, I have a son with autism, and he was nonverbal up until the age of seven, and he started early intervention, and he would have to go all the way out to Mount Vista Academy on a bus by himself with one other person for almost four years. That's all we had at the time. And when you have to put a child that's nonverbal with a different stranger every day because we never had the same van driver, that's hard. That's very, very hard. And you're entrusting these people with one of your most precious things. And that's very hard. And we had no choice because there was nobody here that could provide these things. We also have neurotypical children, and we had that struggle as well. So I haven't seen my husband in 18 years because we've always had to work split shifts. Yes, I come home at 5:00, he goes in at 5:00, and vice versa. And so we have not, you know, had that normalcy in a very, very long time. We've always lacked this here, and it's not okay, and it's not something that we should just become accustomed to. I know, like, right now, we're fighting to get a teen center here. That's only a portion of the battle because we have this as well that, you know, we should all join in and fight for because we do need licensed childcare here. Because as those of us that have lived here know, there have been some instances before where a child did pass away at a home facility, and it was not, it was not good, it was not well. What I will say is, I also will help you guys with whatever you need, any questions, getting ahold of anybody, legislators, things like that. I can help with that as well. I can send an email and write a letter and make a phone call, attend meetings, whatever you guys need. We do have a need here, not just for, you know, this part or that part, like, for all of Florence. There is a huge need. And so, yeah, for whatever you guys need, I'm here to support as well. Oh, and I was gonna say, I do remember when I worked at the sheriff's office, we did do a survey at one time about childcare, and they were actually talking about possibly opening a part or adding on a part of the sheriff's office or one of the county facilities at that time for childcare for county employees. Because I believe the survey came back, and the need was astronomical. So that may be also a place to look is within the county as well. Because I remember they sent out that survey, and the problem was is they couldn't find people to work night shifts at the prison and at the jail because there was no childcare to watch the children at that time. So that is also a resource you might wanna tap into as well, and I can help with that as well. Thank you.
Councilmember Maldonado.
I don't wanna echo what my fellow councilmember said, but I too had a daughter that was mildly autistic, and I know that early childhood intervention worked. You can't tell she's autistic now. She outgrew it. And it was, those beginning years were so important, so I understand fully where you guys are coming from. Being a veteran, being in the DOD system, it was always an issue, but there was always a curriculum, and I was on the other part of that where my wife at the time had a home base, and it was, you'd have the people coming through, and I'd have to put safety, everything, and so I remember that. So I know the importance of safety when your kids go get dropped off at a childcare place, or especially home-based childcare, because there's so many dangers out there. So I'm also part of the chamber, and with the liaison for the chamber. If you guys have been touched out to them, you might wanna see that guy over there in that corner. Paul, and maybe there's a way, there's any businesses out there that might be looking to... I always look into collaborations and having stakeholders, so this might be a thing. So just talk to Paul, and maybe something can happen. The other thing is, I'm with a lot of non-for-profit businesses here in Pinell County, so I'll probably get with one of... so I'll probably get with one of you ladies afterwards to see if there's something that you guys can come out with me to, to, to these non-for-profits when I talk to them, and maybe you guys know more about it than I would, so I'll probably reach out to one of y'all to, to kinda shadow me. So, I wish you guys luck, and like I said, it's so hard to fill a lot of positions because, like I said, the split shifts, that's, I've done that back in the day, it's real hard doing the split shifts. It degrades the family so much, and the, knowing that your kids are taken care of takes a lot off you when you're at work, so licensed caregivers plus, so thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Neil. Thank you, well, thank you very much. I, I find this really enlightening, I'm a little bit embarrassed, I had no idea, these numbers, that's pretty horrific. I'm so glad you came to talk to us. I'm a little more tactical, okay, and I feel this is very fuzzy, and I don't understand the next steps. We have people ready, willing, and able, but off the top of our head, and I know we're already doing an inventory in our buildings, I know councilmember Bedford has been all over that school because I think they're shutting something down that existed. We don't know anymore to do, so what I was going to ask, especially I'd like to know that one developer, now I understand they're in the affordable market, which is a little bit different than some of the developers, but what are they doing to make that work? How can we speak to our developers? What, what are the words, right, and the justification? Because at the end of the day, they're not a charity, right? They may want to get behind this, but we have to tell the story that makes sense, and we don't have the words, but if you help us with that. I'd also like to know your split between federal and state financing for grants and funding that you get, because right now the feds are not going to, you can't commit any dollars, right, that you're hearing about. So I would ask our legislative focal point, if you would look and see if any of those bills have to do with childcare, right? And that's something I think all of us are very willing to lobby for. And so if you could come back to us with any types of concrete, you know, suggested actions.
I can now. It's something we're doing in San Tan Valley, Superior, and Casa Grande, they've created task forces, and so it brings in the business leaders, the town, and yes, they are working on these issues in a concrete format. So we can definitely circle back with you with some dates and get a task force. You tell us who needs to be at the table, we'll tell you who we think needs to be at the table.
Right, so two of us are already working with first things first, as well as many of the community. I know Sophie is off on a, a business trip right now, so you already have a good team here.
Yes, we do.
We just wanna engage and figure out some tactical steps.
Let's do that.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is our regular chamber update, so we're gonna hear from Mr. Paul Felker, who will provide us an update on the Chamber of Commerce activities and upcoming events. Hi, Paul.
And just so council knows, I will send both presentations to you because you didn't have either presentation in your packet. And I apologize for that.
Me too. Before I even start, I wanna touch on a little subject about the prior presentation, and I've talked to Kathy about this. My nephew, a family member, they have a organization based in Gilbert called AACT, and they mainly focus on autistic children. He started this two years ago, they now employ three hundred people, and what they do is they give providers to come to your home and watch your children while the parents are off working or doing something. So it's a state-funded, and it's just a great organization, it's grown by leaps and bounds, they've expanded in New Mexico into Wyoming into Montana. So it's, it's AACT and they have their own website, it's very worthwhile, so I'll just, you know, I'll talk to you guys later about them. I'm, I'm trying to get them to expand out here and then become a very, very vital part of the chamber, so I think I can do that since he's my nephew, so. Good evening, Madam Vice Mayor and Town of Council, Town of Florence Council, I wanna thank you for letting me present tonight my Greater Florence Chamber of Commerce April and May update. Tonight, I'm gonna do a little bit different format. I'm going to go over current and future events, the state of the chamber, and some goals and visions, what our original goals are and how we are doing on achieving some of those. So I'll just start off with some of the recent events. Now, since our last meeting, which was the beginning of April, we've had two mixers. We had a mixer at Allstate Eldon Kaiser out in Anthem, and then we had one last week for AARE Realty at the Windmill Winery. Both of them were very successful, and we actually came away from there getting many new members, and they were just a great success and a great vibe, and everyone had a great time, and I think those are continually getting more successful and getting better. So, Road to Country Thunder, we also did that. As everyone knows, we got the liquor license and we worked with the town with that. It was a great success, and we have it for the next two years, so I'm looking forward to even more success, and I actually have the numbers ran for that, and I will be bringing that to the town here in the next few days. The Tri-City Expo was two weeks ago in Eloy, we did that at Robeson Ranch, and we teamed up with the Coolidge Chamber and the Eloy Chamber, and we had thirty-four vendors there, ten of them from Florence. So that was a great success. We get that in two years, so by that time, we're gonna knock it out of the park, it's gonna be wonderful. Our Small Business Seminar, we did with the Coolidge Chamber two weeks ago in the Coolidge Chamber Boardroom, and that is just a great seminar, so it focuses on small business startups, and last week they did on one-page business plan. So you can put your whole business plan on one page, so you can submit it for a small business loan. Very worthwhile. Ribbon cuttings last week, of course, I think everyone here was at the ribbon cutting out in Safeway, and we, I was very fortunate to be a part of that, and we were actually able to secure them as a chamber member, so that was a very good day. And then here's another new item that we're doing, this is called Business Spotlight, and you can see by this picture, it's me and Gary Power, he was our initial participant in this, so I visit a business and I talk to him for about a minute, and he explains what his business is, what he does, and it's just a good spotlight on Facebook. So we'll do that about every three weeks, I don't wanna do it every week, that'll kind of water it down a little bit. And then of course, here's the business workshops, the next one we have is June twenty-fourth, and it focuses on AI in the business. So upcoming events, we have ribbon cutting this Thursday at the Eighteen Sixty-Six Group on Main Street at ten o'clock, that is the Irish Cowboys new store. Talk of the Town in June, Casino Night July twenty-seventh, Small Business Workshop June twenty-fourth in Coolidge, and the Women in Business June eleventh at the Green Tree Inn. So, when I was at my, at our mixer last week, I was introduced to a young lady, and she asked me a very interesting question. She goes, what is the Chamber of Commerce, and what does it do? And like, that's a good question, you know, a lot of people ask that. So I gave her this answer, I go, it is an organization that represents and supports the business community and the community as a whole. It serves as a voice for all local businesses, we're more than a building, we are the community, and we want to improve and grow it. And how? And she asked me that, I'm like, well, this is our new mission. So when I took over this job, I wanted a new mission statement, I didn't wanna go with the last mission statement was, so we have this new one. So I told her this also, so the Greater Florence Chamber of Commerce strives to be a catalyst for a strong economic partnership with our members, and to promote, advocate, protect, lead, and unite for continued economic growth and prosperity. Now I think the key word in this whole mission thing is catalyst, because catalyst means you go do it, you just don't wait for it to happen, you go do it, and I think lately that's been, that's been happening. I know when I first took this job and, you know, a lot of politics going on, there's a lot of talk going on, a lot, a lot of talk, a lot of talk. Is there a lot of doing? And I, you know, I ask myself this question about every night, are we doing? And I hundred percent think we are, and I think things are improving greatly. So, this is kinda hard to read, so this is a flyer I had made, and this is actually what I told her too, so why join the Chamber of Commerce? So I just made some bullet points here, and these, I'll go through these really quick. What we do, education and development, so we partner with you to keep you updated on quality training and offer chamber members opportunities to market and grow their business. Connect and engagement, we offer events and programs to connect our members to the whole community and provide a vibrant networking system. Advocacy, as the leading voice of business in the Greater Florence area, the chamber works to create and maintain a strong and prosperous business environment. Support, the chamber is here for you, and we will provide a partnership with you and give you the support to promote, protect, and unite our business community. And of course, community involvement, when you join the chamber, you're making a commitment to, to provide a united, united business environment that proves beneficial and credible to all members and the community. And also, when you're, when you join the chamber, and as the chamber itself, you know, we're boosting the community image, our, one of our main goals is to promote the community as a great place to live, work, and to do business in, and by supporting local events, tourism, and quality of life initiatives. So I think those are all things that we do every day, and, and, you know, she was impressed with that answer, and actually, she was there with her mom, and her mom joined the chamber, so it worked, so. I'll go over, so how are we gonna do all this? Like I said, that was talk. Well, our future goals and strategies. Number one goal, retain current membership and prove the benefits of the Greater Florence Chamber of Commerce. Now I'm gonna go over how we're attaining some of these goals in here in a little bit. Expand membership, improve chamber infrastructure, expand on events and improve community exposure and visibility, strengthen existing businesses, attract and help new businesses, expand chamber resources, and teamwork with the community and the town. Well, how are we gonna attain these? So, one of the things we're doing, and this was my main thing too, is just simple, when I first started, being visible, communicative, and available for current members. Relations will improve and businesses will want to retain membership. And I will tell you that, we've had almost one hundred and fifty renewals, I, my next thing I have, one of my goals was what I wanted as chamber membership, and you might be surprised by that. Thus, membership will expand, as will the image of the Greater Florence Chamber of Commerce. We've had thirty-eight new members since the first of the year. That's, that's way above my goal, we're twenty above what my goal was. Updating the current database, financials, and protocols. The database, as of yesterday, is current, it's in categories, it's in alphabetical order, everything is updated and ready to go into the new website. That has been a tedious and long procedure, and it's done, and it's like, it's been, it's a great feeling that it's done. Financials, thus being, that being done, the financials are up to date and accurate. And the protocols, we've, in the final stages of putting together a brand-new employee procedures and policies, so that will be ready to go here in the next couple weeks. More impactful events, networking, collaborating, we've been doing events every week, we do an event, and each one of them is getting more and more people at it. The new website will enhance existing, new, and potential businesses in many ways, I have a surprise for you guys a little bit later. Improving online presence with social media strategy to improve business promotion. Our business spotlight, I, I really enjoyed that one with, I did with Gary, although the next one I might do with a sitting down instead of standing, it might be a little more comfortable for everyone. And a new member focus, we're gonna start next week, new member, we have thirty-eight members, we're gonna get them out there so people can see them and meet them. Teamwork with town, promoting and working together on events. Example, you letting me hear talk, that's a great way for me to communicate what's going on with the chamber and to show that we're working together, and working together in the Road to Country Thunder, I think that was a great partnership. Partnerships with other communities, well, we showed that by doing the Small Business Workshop and the Tri-City Expo. Attending seminars and meetings to beware of current and creating new events, and Kathy can attest to this, two weeks ago, we had a, they were, Take a Fun Trip Tour here in town, so what they were, we met them all at the winery on Wednesday, had lunch with them, Kathy went and had dinner with them on Friday night, and Peter Colores and I met with them in Mesa, and this whole tour, these were all people that construct tours, and they're from all over the country. So we did a workshop in Mesa and an expo promoting Florence, sat down, put together itineraries for all these tours to come to Florence and spend at least one day here, and I think that was very fruitful, and I think it's going to really pay off next year with more tour groups. And improvement, improved involvement with members, expanding our ambassador program and committees to include events, membership, legislative, and roundtables. So, the state of the Greater Florence Chamber of Commerce, the two thousand twenty-five goals, two hundred and fifty members, I just inputted two hundred and seventy-one, and although we have a strided system where some people pay in May, and June, July, but they are all up to date, and so that's two seventy-one, and thirty-eight of those are new, and we have had over one hundred and fifty renewals received so far, so it's been, it's been going good, it's, I'm really happy with it. Website is almost done, I'm gonna give you a little taste of it a little bit later. The chamber directory is almost ready to publish, just a couple things ready to go, and it's gonna go in, get published, get the proof, and it should be out here by the end of May. Database is updated, and all contacts, phone numbers, websites are all up to date, so things are looking good. So here's a little taste of the cover of the new directory and business guide, so right there, so that's a picture from Casa de Baca, and I think it's just, it's gonna, it's gonna look nice. Now, let's compare it to what the Coolidge one looks like. I think ours is a little nicer, so, so okay, we'll go over that one later. So I just, so I wanna go over some, just a quick update on what it costs to become a member of the Chamber of Florence, Florence Chamber of Commerce. So being just a booster individual, fifty dollars a year, home-based business, hundred dollars a year, charitable organization, one hundred dollars a year, one-to-nine employees, one hundred and seventy-five, ten-to-forty-nine, three-seventy-five, fifty-plus, six-twenty-five. We're a very reasonably priced Chamber of Commerce, and, and I think you could really get great return on your investment. Now, not everyone knows who all our board of directors are, so I kinda wanted to show everyone here. So our chairperson is Carrie Bradley, our vice-chairperson is Rita Izay, our secretary is Sophie Desart, our, our new treasurer is Michael Baca, and then down the line we have Shelley Robinson, Gina Corieri, Justin Eckenberger, Keith Rea, and of course, our liaison, Jose Maldonado. So, these are all the pictures that'll be going into the, the new directory, so. So, it's a Western state of mind, I do like that, I wanted to keep that, that's a great saying, and wanna keep saying that. I wanna thank everyone here for letting me do this, thank you to council, thank you Lisa Garcia, and I'd like to thank each member, chamber member who has invested in our organization. Your business and involvement are crucial to the Florence community, and we are grateful for your continued support that enables the Greater Florence Chamber of Commerce to provide a high level of service, leadership, and integrity to its members, I can't quite read, I'll have to go to this one, I can't, and to our many visitors, and we already got it, so, okay, I didn't wanna mess with this, so. Thank you again tonight, and so we're gonna show you just, I got the homepage of the website up, there's nothing else, but it's just kinda the homepage, we're gonna kinda, I just wanna show you guys what has been taking so long to. So this is, oh, sorry, one second, gotta share it. Yep, so we just got some moving pictures there, Juno Prada, a drone shot there, and of course, there's gonna be more on this homepage with the calendar, upcoming events, upcoming, all kinds of things, it's gonna be so, you can, great database in there, you're gonna be, be able to navigate it, you'd be able to, it's just gonna be a hundred percent better than the other one. So over here on the right, that will be the, the upcoming calendar and everything that's gonna be going on, so I just kinda wanted to give you guys a little taste of the, of what the homepage of the website's gonna look like, so thank you again for tonight, and have a great evening.
Thank you. Any comments from the council?
Oh yeah, any questions or comments for me to answer?
I just wanted to say good job, Paul, for all you do and, and to the chamber, and the website looks great, so far.
Yeah, so far, so at least there's something going on, so.
So I just wanted to say, Paul, you've come a long, a long way since you first started here, and you've definitely come a long way, and I liked the presentation, I can't wait to see what it's gonna look like. I had, it was my pleasure being there this past Thursday and bringing a new member with me, and, and I'm excited for what's, what's to come, and I'm hoping we can make these partnerships with, with different businesses, and I really liked that, how that started, the little thing on there, I'd like to have that on a, somewhere in the town, like, so it's showing on a slide, maybe on one of our billboards that, that are coming, so that would be nice, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Paul? The website looks great. The photo of your brochure though, doesn't, to me, say Florence. I don't know where that photo was taken by Baca, it's gorgeous, but the Main Street photo would look photo would look good because it would say Florence. I don't know, gone to print, or if that's been a consideration.
Okay. Yeah, it isn't written in stone yet. They did do a Main Street one a couple of years ago, but, you know, definitely under consideration. I agree, but I kind of like that one too, so maybe we can infiltrate both of them in there, so. Okay.
So I just like to wrap it up. I'm maybe one of your harshest critics, I know poor Paul, I bend his ear a lot, but I will tell you, in the past six, eight weeks, what he has done, and the new members, and the buzz on the street, and you all know, I talk to everybody, and I have never seen the board so energized, I think having Councilmember Maldonado, who shows up at every event, and you have an awful lot of them, Paul, it's really, it's hard for us to show up for all of them, but it's really great. And if anyone was at the windmill for that last mixer, it was amazing. The outsiders that are coming in, and the excitement, and people, they want to be here. So keep doing what you're doing, and thank you very much.
Thank you very much, thanks.
Okay. Now, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. All items listed under this section will be approved in one motion unless a council member wishes to remove an item for separate discussion. Do any council members wish to pull an item at this time? Hearing none, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as listed.
Second. I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
I second.
Okay. So we have a motion made by Councilmember Buchalato, seconded by Councilmember Bedford, to approve the consent agenda as presented. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Next item is new business. Item 8A is a resolution number 1929-25, adopting the tentative budget for fiscal year 2025 to 2026, and setting the time for a public hearing. This item will be presented by Carl Dudding.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, members of the council. We're pleased to present the fiscal year 2026 tentative budget for adoption tonight. The total budget is $98,533,498. Adopting the tentative budget sets the maximum total expenditure for the upcoming fiscal year. Budget adjustments may be made before the final adoption, however, that budget cannot rise above the tentative set tonight. We will return on June 3 to hold a public hearing and have the final adoption of the budget. We will also have the first reading of the property tax levy, and we will return on June 17 to adopt the property tax levy. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Counsel, any questions? Councilmember Buchalato.
It's not really a question, I just wanted to give you and your team kudos again. That budget session was, was nice to go through, it was very laid out for us, and you guys did really, really good work working on that, and thanks again to Councilmember Bencina and Vice Mayor for sitting on that panel with you guys. It really made the process seamless, and I just wanted to say good job.
Thank you, appreciate that. I'll give that back to the staff.
Counsel, any other counsel questions, comments? Okay, do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
I make a motion to approve resolution number 1929-25, a resolution of the Town of Florence, Pinell County, Arizona, adopting tentative estimates of the amount required for the public expense for fiscal year 25 to 26 expenditures and the amount proposed to be expended for various purposes.
Second? I'm sorry, did you?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve by Councilmember Buchalato, seconded by Councilmember Bedford, number 1929-25. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay. There's 8C. Okay. Okay, so now we're at the adoption of the 2025-26 Capital Improvement Plan, I'm sorry, yes. Mr. Dudding.
Madam Vice Mayor, members of the council, you've been provided in the PAC at the CIP plan for FY '26. The FY '26 budget is $53.5 million, with a 10-year plan of $142 million. It's important to remember that this is a planning document. Adoption of the CIP plan does not commit funding. That step is with the final adoption. In addition, any item over $50,000 in the CIP plan will be brought back to council, like all other items, for consideration and approval. As outlined in the RCA, we made four changes to the capital plan since the budget session. Three of those items were council-requested items to be brought forward to 2026. That included the CERT truck, the Police Department VR training, funding for restroom facilities at Main Street Park, and staff included 175,000 in carryover contingency for the Rodeo Well project, which is most likely to roll into next year, hopefully finish up by June or August. And with that, I'll answer any questions.
Counsel, Councilmember Bencina.
Carl, I mentioned it to you before, but how did we resolve, and Bruce, maybe you can answer, the sauna issue for the, is that going to go to grant, or are we, how are we doing that? Since it's not shown as a change.
Vice Mayor, and council members, we looked at that, we're still going to go ahead and move forward. Councilmember Bencina, looking at the grant process, but if we can't get it through the grant process, we're going to go and look at additional monies that we have, maybe set aside through our normal budget. Not set aside, but maybe monies that we may not use through our normal budget.
I'm not sure I'm happy with that decision, but leaving with counsel, but I'm more for putting it on there as funding through CIP, and if you can get a grant, that's fine, but...
That was the direction from counsel that night, is try to achieve grant funding, but if we can't, we were directed to move forward.
Yeah, but didn't we, didn't we cut CIPs down to whether possibly it's not going to be a lot of leftover dollars like it has been in the past?
They, I don't want to say that, but we directed the directors, only bring projects that you're going to get across the line. We don't want to keep having these 50% or lower completed projects. But if we're able to get the recharge rooms at the budget, which was 60,000, unless there's a major price change implementation, we will get those funded in FY '26, as directed.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
And our, I spoke to our grant manager this morning, and he's applied already for a grant for those.
Okay. Well, it's good, I just don't want to say we couldn't get grant money, and we don't have any CIP extra this year, based on everything got completed.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember. I think we already discussed this, we have a plan to go forward to look for the grant, we have a Plan B if we don't get the grant, so this is in motion.
I don't know why I'm being cut off, but, okay.
Anybody else have a comment? Okay, then do I have a motion to approve the 2025-26 Capital Improvement Plan?
I make a motion to approve the 2025-26 Capital Improvement Plan.
Second.
I'm sorry, was that, okay, so we have a motion by Councilmember Buchalato, seconded by Councilmember Maldonado, to approve the 2025-26 Capital Improvement Plan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to item 8C, is the discussion impossible action to enter into a cooperative use contract with the Integated Communications for Security and Fire Alarm Upgrades? Mr. Snyder, you have the floor.
Good evening, Vice Mayor Adams, members of the council. This item being brought forward to you is to finish the security and fire alarm systems throughout the town and the town-owned buildings. We've done our analysis on how to finish this, we went out for bid, and through this cooperative use contract, we're looking for approval to move forward with this item.
Any comments, counsel? Okay. Do I have a motion to purchase the Gateway electronic device?
Make a motion to approve new business item 8C, Cooperative Use Contract with Integated Communications, to update and finalize the tunnel and building security of fire alarms in an amount not to exceed $153,141.92.
Second? So we have a motion by Councilmember Maldonado, seconded by Councilmember Buchalato, to approve the purchase of Gateway electronic device. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay, we'll move on now to the legislative update. Mr. Graves, do you have an update? No. What did I miss? Oh, D.
Mayor, just to make sure, for the item that we just did, it was for the Integrated Communications Security and Fire Alarm. So now, we will move on to item 8D, to discuss the Gateway Electrical Device.
Oh. Okay, so we're on 8D, thank you. This is the discussion, approval, disapproval, to purchase a Gateway electronic device from U.S. Digital Designs in an amount not to exceed $58,511.83 for integration of the fire station alerting equipment to the new alarm room CAD system upgrade. Mr. Snyder.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Adams, member of the council. This is just an electronic device that, with the upgraded alarm room equipment that we have, integrates the fire stations, one and two alarm systems, so that they'll work properly for notification of responders.
Okay, so do I have a motion to approve the electronic Gateway device?
I make a motion to approve, to purchase a Gateway electronic device from U.S. Digital Designs in the amount not to exceed $58,511.83.
Second.
So I have a motion by Councilmember Buchalato, and I'm sorry, was that Councilmember Maldonado?
Bedford.
Bedford, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Now, we'll have a legislative update.
Good evening, Vice Mayor Adams, members of the council. To begin, I just wanted to share a couple of updates regarding today's action alerts that were sent from the League. So today, House Bill 2221, that is Law Enforcement Defunding Prohibition, went to final read in the House. That did pass out of the House, and the next stage would be transmitting to the governor. Our House members did vote in favor of that, with the exception of Representative Martinez. As a reminder, this bill prohibits cities and towns from reducing law enforcement budgets beyond certain thresholds unless specific criteria are met. The League has prepared a veto letter that they're preparing to send to the governor tomorrow, and it's unclear whether she supports this provision at this point. The other bill which went to final read in the House today was 2222, that is the Settlement Agreement Bill, that also passed out of the House, and this bill requires governing bodies to publicly report, excuse me, state governing bodies to publicly report and approve local settlement grievance over $500,000. And so obviously, local control concerns with that, if we have to have the JLBC or the state legislator looking at certain legal agreements that are of a higher dollar amount. So the League is preparing a veto letter for that as well. Moving on to some transportation funding, following our Capitol visit last week where we discussed potential funding opportunities for Hunt with our House members, they ended the conversation by letting us know that they were expecting to receive an update on the budget, revenues, and the process in the House. That was yesterday that they were expecting to have that meeting, so given that timing, I would encourage our council members to reach out, see what they may have learned, see if there may be any capacity in the budget this year for regional transportation priorities. So that remains an open question, though they did indicate that the budget this year, they expect it to be very tight for the state. Lastly, I just wanted to give a brief Ag to Urban update, since it's been asked about previously. So last week, the Senate did share their latest proposal with the governor's office during their stakeholder meeting process. Just want to highlight a few provisions of the Senate's new plan, so it would establish a six-year program allowing IGFRs, those are irrigated, groundfathered rights, to be relinquished as credits that can later be applied towards a certificate of assured water supply. So they chose that window because CAGRIT is going through, that's the Central Arizona Groundwater District, sorry, there's a lot of acronyms with water policy, so they're going through a mid-year review that's set to be approved in 2025, so they don't want the initiation of this Ag to Urban program to kind of throw a wrench in that process. So that's what that six-year IGFR window is regarding. In terms of the conversion rate for farmlands going from ag to urban, the conversion rate would be set at 2.0 for the Phoenix and Tucson AMAs, and 1.5 for Pinell AMAs. Again, this is just the proposal from the Senate, but that was in their latest plan. And then, their proposal does not address the three out of five years, or two out of five years, basically how long farmland has to be farmed in order to be eligible for this program. The Senate appears willing to compromise on that, but they have not picked a specific number. That's probably one of the largest points of contention for this Ag to Urban proposal. And so the governor's office committed to sharing this internally with their staff, and will continue that stakeholder process in the weeks ahead. And so that concludes my update for this evening, happy to take any questions.
Any questions? Any news on, is it 123, the school funding for teachers?
I've not, but I can definitely look at that and send an email.
Thank you. Thank you very much, appreciate it. Next on the agenda is our Town Manager Report. Mr. Walls.
Vice Mayor, council members, just want to tell you, I've had the opportunity at least the last month or so to sit around the table and listen to how other cities and towns are handling their budget. I just want to come back and say, give a sincere thank you to this team, and Vice Mayor Adams and Councilmember Bencina, what a great process we went through, it was a smooth process, and thank council for their approval tonight. I have nothing more to go ahead and add in the Town Manager Report, other than what's there in our weekly report, so again, I am extremely proud of this team. Thank you.
Well, thank you, and for the public, our Town Manager has been providing a pretty detailed report to all of the council on a weekly basis, so, which is very helpful, we appreciate it, thank you. Any questions for the Town Manager? Okay, then we'll move on. Oh, I'm sorry.
I just got a comment, and I just want to give a kudos out to the See Click Fix team. There's been a lot of great progress at this town, cleaning up lots. I follow See Click Fix, as Bruce knows, and I can tell you, counsel, that if you've looked at what's happened in this town, the See Click Fix team is working to get the lots cleaned up and the things that we see out there, so I appreciate See Click Fix. Thank you.
We appreciate your help as well, Councilmember Bencina.
I'll just add that I had a call from a resident who asked me to turn a See Click Fix report in, because everyone's uncomfortable turning in their neighbors, and I just wanted to drive around and see it before I logged the report, and it was already cleaned up. So now you've mastered telepathy in your See Click Fix, so we appreciate it. Okay, the next item on the agenda is to receive and file the department reports. These are informational only. Does counsel have any questions on the department reports? If not, then I'll move on to the second call to the public. If anyone wishes to address the council on any matter, you may do so now. Please remember that your comments are limited to three minutes. Don't see anybody online. Okay, then close the call to the public, and at this point, I would take a motion to adjourn. Oh, sorry, thank you. What would I do without you? Okay. Last item on the agenda is call to council. So I'd like to start with Councilmember Bedford.
Firstly, I wanted to...
Firstly, I wanted to say, I enjoyed going to all of the events that we were scheduled to go to. I definitely enjoyed Safeway reopen. Community Center sports. We have soccer, and I know basketball is coming up, and I haven't seen any of that on our website. I feel as though that the website, I believe I asked this last month, when will the website be updated? When will we have all of our, our events put on? I loved what Paul did from the Chamber of Commerce. Come on, y'all, we're, this is a new journey for us, and we have to show people that we care about our town and about our children who play sports. I was out there running with the soccer team, and I enjoyed that. And now I'll be working out with the basketball team. Kyle Wright is out there. I seen, I don't know, Paul, that when it comes to, once the games are over, do you have an employee that goes out to check and make sure that the grounds are clean and everything? Because we had some trash all over the field. My thing is rodents, and you definitely don't want that. So that's just something I'm just giving to you, so you can pass that on to your employees to make sure that we don't have to worry about that anymore. The daycare, I'm going to push for that. I'm going to push for that. And matter of fact, Dawn, I want you to give me a call tomorrow. I wanted to also ask about the solar panels at the water tower. When are they going? I'm not saying they have to be over at the first water tower. Where are you going to put them at, Town Manager Walls?
Vice Mayor, council members, I'll be more than happy to go and answer that question at a later time.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I'm just trying to get that, you know how we're getting younger. I'm getting younger. So I want to make sure I throw things out there before I tend to forget. I believe, that's it, for me. Thank you.
Councilmember Bencina.
I just want to thank everybody, and I want to thank our firefighters. It was International Firefire Week and Day, and hopefully next week, next year, we can do some things I saw going on around the valley honoring fallen firefighters. So, but my hats go off to our firefighters, and always go off to our police PD as we do things, and I appreciate it. So it was interesting, I saw Quinn Creek was awarding a contract that a company drive over their roads and map them for road improvements, and we do that in the town of Florence. I had a, had a resident send me, Glendale Police Department's finally going to put moving radar in their vehicles, and I reached out to the chief of police, and he said, "We already have it." So now I'm slowing down, because they can get you coming and going. So I went back to the resident, he said, "They already have it?" And he says, "Is it at both ends of the vehicle?" I said, "Yes, it is." He says, "Oh, no, I got to slow down." But anyway, we have a lot of things going on in this town, equipment-wise and so on, that's awesome, that's been supported by councils in the past, and will be supported by councils in the future. So again, thanks to everybody for the work that you do for the town.
Councilmember Maldonado?
Thank you Vice Mayor. I just wanted to congratulate Officer JB Smith. I graduated in motor school. I know the chief and I had talked about that, you know, trying to get somebody, you know, on that bike that's been collecting dust. So I just want to say congrats, and yeah, hopefully I can see him out there when I'm out there on the road too. The other thing is that I think, like I said, tonight was great. It was a little lengthy, but I learned so much tonight from, from so much, from what's going on, and I'm really appreciative of all the work that went into the budget and getting that pass along the stages. It's come a long way since I came on three years ago, so kudos for resurrecting the committee, the Budget Committee, because that was instrumental, and I think, and it's going to show, I'm hoping, down the line. So just thank you for everybody for doing that. And also, I think two days from now, Penal County's having something at Jason Lopez to honor the fallen officers. So if you can, please make it out there. I'm going to try to make it out there, so if I can, for a little bit. So if any other council members are out there, welcome to join me. Just make sure we don't have a quorum. So, and if we do, you post it right now.
Councilmember Bucelato, would you like to say a few words about what Thursday night's all about? It's pretty important.
Yeah. So Thursday is the Fallen Officers Memorial at the Penal County Sheriff's Office. It's to honor those that have lost their lives in the line of duty. I try and go every year, and it is very near and dear to my heart, as a family friend passed away in the line of duty years ago. He was well-known around town and just an overall great person, and he passed away in the line of duty. So if you can go, it's a beautiful tribute to those that risk their lives every day, and this is one of the main reasons why I support our police and fire like I do. Thank you guys for all you do. And it's at 6:45.
Would you like to say anything else and call to council?
Is it my turn now? So I also wanted to say happy Municipal Clerks Week to Lisa, Trish, and Ian. You guys are a phenomenal team. You keep us all in line. You handle everything that's thrown at you guys to the best of your ability, and I just wanted to say that I greatly appreciate you, and I've learned so much from you, especially you, Lisa. So congratulations on that. I'll be sending you guys lunch this week, so, not going to tell you what day, but I will. And I just wanted to thank you guys for all you do. You guys always go above and beyond for us, and it's appreciated. I also wanted to say kudos to Public Works, and the Town Manager for helping me. I get, I don't know if everybody has signed up for the smart water alerts. I know it came out in our bills a couple of years ago, and they kept sending them and saying, and I finally did it, and I'm so glad I did, because one night I get a text message saying, "You've used 611 gallons of water in the last few hours." I'm like, "What?" And then, and I have boys, and they do not shower as much as girls, so I knew that was not right, because I have to fight them to shower, you know? And so I was like, "What?" And then the next morning I get, "You've used 1,800 gallons of water in the last few hours," and I'm like, "Uh, I'm not paying this bill. When am I going to have to take this bill on? Because I don't know what's going on here." And so I made a call to the Water Department, and they were so quick to jump on it, and found out that my meter was actually malfunctioning and cracked. So I just wanted to say, and we did find a small irrigation leak, but not to the extent of 2,000 gallons. One gallon was kind of pooled in there. But I just wanted to say thank you to the Water Department, and thank you to Public Works for handling that and being out there and taking care of that in a timely manner. And I just wanted to say, you know, our town is small, but we are mighty. When, when I talk to people from other towns, and I watch, I'm always sending Lisa stuff from other town meetings, I try to educate myself as much as I possibly can. I've been in this position for about two and a half years. I have a year and a half left on my term, and I try to educate myself as much as I can. And when I look at what other towns are doing, and much bigger towns, we are right there with them, and we are exceeding in some areas, and we are even with them in others. And I just wanted to say that I'm very proud to be a resident of this town, and, you know, we're always up for suggestions. You can email any of us. We have a whole council email that will go to every one of us, and we really do want to hear your feedback and your suggestions. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Neil?
Well, let's start off with Florence Sports. The junior high, both basketball teams made the playoffs. In fact, I was at my daughter's game before I had to come to the council meeting, and girls' junior high basketball is rough to watch. But they doing it, I don't know if they want or not yet, but the boys are playing, and the girls are both playing. High School Track and Field will be starting state here this weekend, and yeah, I believe we got the relay. My son's doing shot and discus. The girls relay team is pretty, very good, so hopefully we can get some state champions out of that. Baseball, our baseball team made it to the first round of the playoffs, and unfortunately got put out, but they had a heck of a season, and it's next year. Something I wanted to talk about, we mentioned about the memorial for Penal County. It often sometimes feels like Florence becomes numb to the fact. And a lot of people may not know, Jason Lopez was born and raised right here in Florence. He's a gopher. Jason Lopez gave his life in the line of duty, and it just sometimes seems like Florence fails to mention it, to say that we have a hero that lost his life in the line of duty, that me and him went to high school together. Me and him worked at the Sheriff's Department together. That dude's dad is Penal Forty, that lives right down the street, that is still in Florence. We, I think we need to do a lot more for a local hero that lost his life in the line of duty than what we do. So that is definitely something that I believe us as the council need to do something about. Love you Jay, hero. Last thing I have is Chief Bruce. I know you stepped down from the station, and I know law enforcement was your life for a long time, you stepped into something else. I just want to thank you, because what you did with the Florence PD is amazing. From where it came from, to where you took it from, where you left it, and I know the cat coming in, worked under him at the Sheriff's Department for years, but I just want to say thank you for what you've done for Florence. Florence PD making us one of the safest places, getting officers out, interacting with the community, and everything you've done. I thank you, and you're doing great at your new endeavors, but I just want to give you a thanks. You're an honorary gopher.
Now we expected you to talk about as Town Manager. Are you all set? Okay. First of all, I just want to say, I just love this town. I love this council. You're hearing the passion from everybody, and this is a council that is so involved and so passionate about this community. It is just an absolute pleasure to be here. I have to give a shout out to our mayor, who's not with us tonight on a well-deserved vacation, but he's the one, while he was running for office, talked about the budget, and talked about bringing it back and getting it as socialized as possible and taking as many inputs. So I want to give him a shout out, and again, go back to our team. The Town Manager, Carl Dudding, we all know Becky from years and years of dedication, and Ms. Lisa Garcia. I am telling you, this, I'm not going to demean the effort that both council member Bencina and I put into it, but you made it so easy. It was, the hard work was done. There wasn't a question that was asked that hadn't been thought through. You could stand up to every decision. I really appreciate, and what we're finding out now, and I'm speaking to the public, we asked for a conservative to flat budget, and we had a lot of caveats from our staff, trying to read the tea leaves and understand what's going on, and they were absolutely right. If you're following the state, the state overestimated their budget, their revenues, right? They are down in income tax, they are down in corporate tax, and they're down in sales tax. That about empties the bucket, right? So we were very, very smart. We had the foresight to plan for conservative and flat budget, and I think it's going to serve us well going forward. I had one question on the department reports, Director King, on the rodeo grounds. I noticed that we had a report back from last fall, and it talked about the rodeo grounds master plan, which includes all the infrastructure, electrical plumbing, event management, where we're going with it. But I didn't see any update to that in January, so hopefully by the next meeting, we can get an update, because we're coming to the end of our fiscal year, and I know we had a lot of capital planned for the rodeo. And I just want to understand where we are with that master plan, because we also have budgeted money in next year's capital plan. So I think it's pretty important to understand what that plan is looking like. Mr. Felker did mention, I had the pleasure of going on a tour bus convention, right? It's my second one, so I guess I'm getting a little experience. It's very interesting. So we're selling basically to tour bus wholesalers, right? So they package up tours, and then they sell to the bus drivers. We were really lucky, because Damon Anderson used to live in Florence, and he is now a tour operator, and he kind of got us invited to the party. And I will tell you, the excitement of the people coming to Florence, because we got a bus to actually, Michelle Carpenter, thank you very much, from the county, was instrumental in getting them to come to Florence. They went to the Biosphere, then they went to the Arboretum, and then they came to the Windmill, and it, they absolutely loved it. They took the horse and buggy ride, and then we got the bus to come down Main Street, and I think that's what gets people, because once they see our Main Street and the authenticity, they got off the bus at Peyton's Treasures, and they went downstairs for the ghost. They didn't see a ghost, but they loved the story. They're coming back, I guarantee you, right, Paul? They are coming back, there's no doubt about it. And that's a bandwagon we had started years ago, and we lost the thread, but I'm telling you, the excitement is back, and we are getting so many volunteers from the town. And I always said, for us to grow, it's going to have to be organic. It's not the town's responsibility alone, right? You need the people to pitch in, and I am seeing this all over. We have another challenge going on. Liz Aguilar is challenging Kyle to an ice bucket challenge on top of the barbecue challenge. So we're getting it going in this town. I am just so happy. With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Could we have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
A motion from Councilmember Bedford, second from Councilmember Maldonado. All in favor? Aye. Aye. We are adjourned. Thank you.